...session, very productive in the conversation about our budget. And today is now three o'clock, so I'd like to call to four, Mr. Councilman May, Tuesday 4th. Mr. Clerk, if you'd just call.
Mayor Brooks.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilman Estes.
Here.
Councilman Cassidy.
Here.
Councilman May.
Here.
Councilman Hughes.
Here.
Councilman Webb.
Here.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I was trying to think back in my memory of serving in Nashville for 12 years and now here for three, if there's ever been a time that we've had both members of the state delegation present. I can't remember we ever have had both at the same time, which we do today. It is our tradition to always have the pledge of allegiance and prayer at the beginning. And I have asked, in this rare occasion, for Chairman Howell if he could give the invocation after Representative Hall leads us in our pledge of allegiance. So please stand. Representative Hall.
I teach and salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman Howell.
Let's pray. My heavenly Father, we thank you for your gracious goodness to us and the opportunity to live in such a wonderful community as Cleveland and Bradley County. Thank you for these certain leaders who represent us so well with integrity and honesty, with a true desire to do what's best for your people. Thank you for your goodness upon this community and pray today that you would give guidance to these leaders, that you would bless their decisions. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is to waive the reading of the minutes from our regular session, which was May 10, 2021. That does require a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council of Cleveland waived the reading of the minutes from the regular session the City Council held on May 10 and approve him as written.
One second. That is a proper motion by Vice Mayor Johnson, properly seconded by Councilman May. Any comments or questions on that, those minutes? Seeing none and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call for them.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman May.
Aye.
Councilman Hughes.
Aye.
Councilman Webb.
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Aye.
Councilman Estes.
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy.
Aye.
Okay, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Takes us to item five on the agenda, which is special presentations and public comments. We do have one very special presentation today, and it is the reason that we are honored with Representative Mark Hall, who represents the city of Cleveland, the 24th district, and Representative Dan Howell, representing our state district, 22. Gentlemen, thank you for your service. Someone commented earlier, the uniqueness. Now both members of our local delegation are both chairman and vice chairman of transportation. So later today, we'll talk more about Highway 16 and Highway 8. But we know that you're not here to talk about that now. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. You know, it's good to be home and it's good to be in friendly territory. While serving in Nashville, I've got a colleague that ducks into my office from West Tennessee. And whenever he comes in, he wants to talk about the great things that's happening in his district in West Tennessee. I normally let him get through, and then I run the score up on him. I said, "Let me tell you about the city with spirit." Our city has endured tremendous growth, but we still have small-town hospitality. We've got 48,000 veterans in a 50-mile radius, which reinforces the fact that the volunteer spirit is alive and well. And we hold multiple state titles in different sports and championships year after year, even though our talent is divided three separate ways. And I realize that there's one thing, that there's a common denominator in all of this, and that's our people. And that's what brings me here today, just to honor one of us. This is Mr. Charlie McKenzie. He was a mentor and a friend to me. And I could have brought a proclamation today, and it would have been great, but I brought a joint resolution, a document signed by the governor and the delegation that will live on. A hundred years from now, this family will be able to look back and know that he was honored on this day. Late one afternoon on a Saturday, I was closing the barber shop, and Mr. Charlie McKenzie knocked on my door. And he sat in the waiting room as if he wanted to talk, but I didn't know what he wanted to talk about, but he asked me the question that we all asked ourselves sometime. What do I have to do to win the election for City Council? And my answer was very simple. Beat Charlie McKenzie. Nobody can beat Charlie McKenzie better than Charlie McKenzie. Ms. Marsh, I want to thank you for sharing him with us. He simply made Cleveland and Bradley County a better place to live. And I want to thank you for your leadership in carrying the torch when all the conditions wasn't exactly perfect. Mr. Mayor, if I've broken protocol, my apologies, but I want to thank you for having me today. And if I may, may I present this joint resolution, signed by Governor Lee, Representative Dan Howell, myself, Senator Gardenhour, and Senator Mike Bell. May I present this to her now?
Certainly. Excellent.
I'd like to say that I hope Charlie would be very happy to receive this.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hall, and we appreciate you being here. Chairman Howell, I would be remiss if I did not invite you to say a few words or...
Just glad to be here.
Welcome home. Please give this beverage to our governor.
Thank you.
It's always a pleasure to have you both here. That is the only on-the-record presentation that we have, which opens up now under Section 5 for public comments. Is there anyone who would like to seek recognition for public comments? If you would, although we know your name, would you please come to the podium and state your name for the record, just so we can have that for the minutes?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor Brooks. My name is Chris Townsend with Southeastland Trust. I have two requests. The first is a request that the zoning change, the zoning application that we put in several months ago for Colossi Avenue be heard at the next City Council meeting. The City Council elected to take no action on May 12, and we would like to have a determination by this body on that matter. The second is, I would ask your assistance in gaining clarification about permitted uses for property. There are three parcels on both right circles, and we have asked of the city in an email on May 5 about permitted uses for those parcels. We have not been able to achieve a response. So any help there would be greatly appreciated as well.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. We will enter that request into the record. Anyone else would like to seek recognition for public comments at this time? If you would come to the podium and state your name for the record, although we know, Ms. Goldson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of, again, we would like to see about getting an ordinance now. Chief Gibson and Joe Fives did look into a couple of those matters that I brought before your last City Council meeting, and it looks like there needs to be more action taken. We would like to get an ordinance for the 2nd district. We can get the limitations placed, but we've had two new additions to the farm since the last City Council meeting. So we see that it's not going to stop. It's going to get worse, and it's getting hotter. The smell is not pleasing to anyone. They have taken up so much of their land with the farm that now they park in the street, and that's an ordinance among itself, and they can't park in the street. And that's already on the books, so we've asked if they would look into that. But we would like to get a zoning ordinance or some type of ordinance for farm animals not to be allowed within the city property. And I do have two of the residents in that area that came to speak if you need them to.
Thank you.
And also, are the ordinance, the city code enforcement on the landlords, Mr. Fives, were they fined? The landlords that are dumping inside the city, did they get fined? You were going to look into that.
They're looking into it.
Okay, they're still looking into it because they just had it all last week. Once it got published in the paper that we were talking about it, we had a little bit of everything out there this past week. And literally, they wait till public works close off, and they dump again. So we need to look at either changing the pickup date or something. Those two, I really would like someone to look into.
Thank you, Ms. Goldson.
Thank you.
And before we move on to the next agenda item, are there any other requests to speak under public comments from members of the audience? As we said at one o'clock, it's actually good to have members of the community and guests joining us. And seeing none and hearing none, Mr. Fives?
If there's no one else, I do have a couple of announcements.
Yes, ma'am. If you would come to the podium and state your name for the record, so that we can enter that into the minutes. We're thankful that you're here.
Yes, my name is Sonia Pugh. I live on 729 First Street, Nobeeks. And I've been trying to get a curb that's on Berry Street fixed since January. I have spoke with Bill Estes, Joe Fives. I have sent emails, and this is May. It's supposed to be the top priority, and it hasn't gotten taken care of yet. And now I'm here in front of the people, and I want to know why this hasn't been taken care of.
And you said curb on Berry Street.
It's on Berry Street, but when the water runs and it rains real hard, it tires up my yard. I have had that taken care of quite a lot. So I don't know what other actions I need to do to take care of this. So maybe you guys can help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Mr. Estes?
Yeah, Ms. Pugh. Thanks for coming. Turned pictures in. City staff says they're on it this summer. They're going to get it done. I drive by First and Berry frequently. I know exactly, I know that the city had an asphalt curb there before. I see it's been broken in mostly by the garbage trucks or public works trucks. City's going to take care of that. I'll let, you know, I've already turned it in as a work order. It will get done. I suspect things like this will get done when curbs and gutters are done in that neighborhood or put on... I'm not sure what it is, you know, the work orders get kind of put together when they're in certain areas. I'll let Mr. Fives speak further to that.
Yes, that was turned in, and Dr. Estes said, given that, is that right when it was planned to get done, when they get done with the project out at Candy's Lane, so probably, my guess is it will probably be done this week, because they're just transitioning off that and doing that. But it's something that was not dropped or fallen between. It's just getting out there and mobilizing to get that. Dr. Estes described it exactly correctly as that, my guess it will be done this week.
Thank you, Mr. Fives. I saw one more thing. If you would come to the podium and state your name, so that we can have that in the minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elise Goldson, and I am the direct neighbor to 911 Second Street, the farm. This has been something that has been on for, since 2013. I would like to thank Bill Estes for, I know I got him just nervous about all the boats that he had in the front yard for four years, and then the animals came.
And did, just so I could, boats, B-O-A-T-S?
A Ponzo boat that he was rebuilding that took him six years. I forget what, a sailboat that took four years. And once they had that removed, he just put them on the side, and he bought him a car that is still sitting there since 2017 in the front yard. And then he just added and added. I talked to him. It's my yard, I do what I want to. I'm tired of looking at it. My neighbors tired of looking at it. I had a lady that's just, you know, 90 years on the corner. Can't sit on her porch. The smell is horrible. And I just don't think it's fair that we pay our taxes and insurance, and we got to look at all this. I come home from work, I got goats everywhere. The dog has got his head up under my fence, me dog. And I told him, I'm going to shoot him if he get one of those kids in my yard. I need something done. He doesn't, he say he's disabled. He does a lot of things. I don't understand it. Me, myself, I want something done for my family, which owns three properties, and the elderly lady that has the right to sit on her porch and not have to smell all this. I would just like for you guys to do something.
Thank you, Ms. Goldson. Thank you for coming today and speaking to us. All right, anyone else that is here that would like to speak under public comments? Any members of the council at this time, seeing none and hearing none?
Yeah, I'm there. I've got one thing I did.
Councilman Cassidy?
Animal feces. I did look up that, you know, what causes exposed animal feces associated with diarrhea, soil infection, and a lot of other things too. So that is a health concern. Is the Health Department, can we get them involved in this? It's not the city, but as far as health-related issues, can the Health Department help us out with that?
Mr. Fives, I'll seek your wisdom or...
I'm just asking a general question.
We'll turn it into them. It's their discretion on what they would do.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Webb, would you... Sorry, I thought I heard something from you. What did that?
All right. If we want to talk about this now, and not undermine things, one of the things I was going to do was ask Mr. Fives, Mr. Kimball, to look at other ordinances in Tennessee to prevent, which animals and why, similar to what we did with the pigs, which were already, we had swine ordinance, but not, let's say, goats and whatnot. Even going back further, John, you'll remember when we talked about annexing back East Cleveland, people came in, they were upset about their cows, their horses, and a lot of work was done on that, so...
Do you mention this to you?
Yeah.
Other cities do regulate other kinds of animals. We can bring you some examples. If you're going to talk about goats, one of the issues you're going to have to address is livestock type goats that we, those of us that grew up in the South think of versus these pigmeat goats that are a little bitty that people have as pets.
No, I don't know.
Just like hot-mellied pigs. Right. Well, we can bring you examples of what other cities have on goats and other animals. Generally speaking, cities don't have the authority to zone agricultural uses and eliminate agriculture through zoning. It's not a power that's been given to cities and counties by the state. You do have your police powers where you can prohibit, just as you prohibit swine. You can prohibit other animals if you choose to do so. But that's how you do it. You wouldn't do it through your planning commission. Council would need your ordinance to prohibit a specific breed of animal.
Yeah, let's just bring us other ordinances. That's all I'm asking for. You know, the same thing as we did, we already have in place in that section with swine.
And horses, as I understood.
Yeah, maybe.
I think Mrs. Goldson was bringing that to our attention her last visit. Mr. Fives?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple issues of what animals, and I guess I'd have to go back and look closer at that, is if there are nuisance ordinances that would already take effect in this situation if the smell is a problem. So you have to look at, is if, that's the first time that the smell has been communicated to me that I recall, is so we can, our current ordinances can work on that without touching which animals are or not, is they need to, any property owner needs to be able to keep any noxious orders or anything. So we can work on that issue right now.
Great. Take it on both fronts.
Councilwoman McKenzie, you got a comment?
We're talking about the types of animals, but what about the number of animals that can, because that can increase smell. So what about the, is there a restriction on how many animals a person can have on their lot? Are there how many of a certain type?
No.
And can there be? Is there anything we can do there to limit how many? Isn't there a limit on how many dogs people can have, or how many cats they can have?
No.
Well, is there anything we can do?
Let me, here's what, most cities choose to deal with the negative effects of too many animals rather than placing an arbitrary limit on it. There is one or two cities in Tennessee that cap the number of dogs at five, but most people would say, well, that's already too many. That's why Cleveland and other cities have ordinances that deal with the effects of too many, the noise, the smell, the cleanliness of the lot for the animals. Animals have to be properly cared for and sheltered. Those are already on the books, okay? If you, just the consequence of thinking about this, if you limit the number of animals that people can have citywide, which is how you have to do it under your police powers, then you're going to have to get into, do we want to make an exception for people that breed dogs or breed cats or whatever, because there are people that breed dogs. They have litters of puppies. So those are the consequences. Typically, cities don't cap the number of dogs that people own on their lot. They leave that to the other effects that come with having too many, typically which is either noise or odor or the care of the animals. There are animal cruelty laws already on books, for example, that say your animals have to have food and have a shelter and that type of thing. So see, Cleveland already has all those ordinances. Now, you can, you would have the authority to arbitrarily set a limit on the number of animals that someone could have. You could say, we don't want people in Cleveland to have more than five dogs on their property. But understand that there are many different neighborhoods in Cleveland. When you make one rule, you're going to make a rule for the five-acre lot that's somewhere in the city that's totally wooded, and the neighbors aren't next to anybody, and then the small lot where their neighbors are, you know, 25 feet away in downtown or more dense neighborhoods. So those are the things you have to think about.
And what are the ordinances about the smell and the cleanliness?
We already have all those.
But you're saying, what are they? I mean...
I think Councilwoman McKenzie, the next council meeting, June 14, will close for the 31st Memorial Day, but by the June 14 meeting, we could have a list of the ordinances that we currently have and then some other options from other cities. So that can be prepared for us and we'll dive into it on the 14th. I'm grateful for all of this interaction about this. I do think it's a very important discussion to have. Any other comments or questions from the council? All right, that takes us to item number six on our agenda, which is a public hearing. Today's public hearing to hear public comments concerning the fiscal year 2022 budget, which is in our packets, was distributed on pages two through three. And we'll now declare the public hearing to be open. Would anyone, or is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the approval of this year's budget? We'll wait just a few minutes. Seeing none and hearing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition against the fiscal year 2022 budget that has been presented? Wait just a few minutes. Again, hearing none and seeing none, I will declare this public hearing on the budget to be closed. Takes us to item number seven on the agenda, which is consent agenda. The consent agenda was distributed earlier, has been included in your packets. Mr. Fives, do you have any comments on the consent? You're recognized.
Yeah, normally at the one o'clock meeting, we would have went through this, and I want to take a minute and just make sure we can address if there's any questions. You know, the first item is the Derkey Road item, zoning ordinance, which the council already approved at the last meeting. Then there's a rezoning from Benton Pike and Derkey Road from industrial zoning to MU, and that was approved by the planning commission and also by the council. Then you have the central business district zoning, which we talked about at the last meeting, which would give some more teeth and some more limitations on protecting some of the properties. But then you have a simple one, allowing the mayor to sign a contract amendment for the dates of the Dalton Pike project, and the mayor to sign a deed of correction for a utility. There's something they found in their deeds on the Georgetown one. What I want to talk about is that you have in your agreement a discussion for the Henderson, Huterson, and McCullough redevelopment up there. You have a picture that's their rendering. We had had several conversations. They are ready to go. They are in a hurry. We were trying to figure out some pieces of this, and, but they're ready to get started. And so want to put that in front of the council, is that this is, just want to make sure we can address any questions you may have before we move forward. There's some contingencies. They would very much like to purchase the fire station building next to that. We conveyed that to the county. This agreement is not connected to that purchase or, it does not mandate or indicate that we have to do that. It is a very strong desire that at some point they end up with that building, and we're working on that. I'm happy to address any questions. But I think the central point is, is that that is something that they strongly desire. You see a beautiful picture, but they will redo that entire complex probably to that level of value. The, probably the second point is that we are also getting bids for asbestos abatement. Some of those costs have likely have gone up. But the way this is handled in this is that we are not necessarily doing the asbestos abatement. By approving this, whatever the low number we get for the asbestos abatement, is that we will give them essentially a credit or an amount to take care of that. Thing is, they want their, you know, you see River, the River Street, there are the architects, and they're going to have contractors. They want their contractors to get in there to deal with it. They don't want to have a third-party person come in. So I do want you, as you approve this, is that that would start that process of us okaying that payment to them for that asbestos removal.
John, I think we're better off to do that, that we're out of it.
Yeah. But outside of that, I mean, we've talked about it, you approved the, their, you know, we wish you had more time to cross the Ts and dot the Is. Their issue, their costs are going up, they want to move to Cleveland. This is a redevelopment. We're working with the county to find solutions for some of those other issues. And so there's nothing that creates an obligation between the county and us, but it's a very, very strong desire that they have the ability to purchase that building and redevelop that entire corner.
Joe, we mentioned the historic tax credit to state. Representative Hall and Howell just, will this building qualify? I know that we talked about Cherokee, but that would be an amazing additional help to them, should they choose to opt in.
It's cloudy on how they develop that. This, and I would probably say they probably will not qualify, because this, for some reason, this property was not included in the historic zone in the downtown. Everything around it is, but this one was not. It's a little vague, as they say, it is not qualified for the federal tax credit unless we were to go through the process and do that. It's probably a year process. The state credit's a little vague. They might be able to apply for it, but they would probably be unsuccessful with the historic tax credit. But we've encouraged them that there is a facade grant for, I think, up to 50... facade grant for, I think up to $50,000, is that they could apply for a facade grant that could help redo some of that. And some of the street scape, when you see, we may apply for, for some other grant forms, is that I think there's some opportunities to, to work on that.
Okay.
I just want to thank you and staff, this is exactly the kind of partnership for that type of redevelopment, professional, exactly what Cleveland needs, bringing long-term types and professionals. With that, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Sick. All right, that is a proper motion by Councilman Estes, properly seconded by the discussion by Councilman, Councilman May, and we have our first discussion request from Councilman Hughes, you're recognized.
I just, in, in the contract, Joe, it says that we would allot them 12 to 15 parking places.
Yes.
And how, how do we do that? That, that is a property there, I know right across the street, see Rebecca J's Cafe, and are you talking about allotting them parking on the street? Because there's no, there's no parking.
No, there's, there's a diagram, and I don't think I have it as a, as a digital form. Eventually, that problem will get easily.
Eventually, you're right, I know it's a part of the, the long process, or, or the eventual process will be.
Yes.
That would be no problem, but that may take a while.
Yes.
So.
So, to make us have 100% certainty that we can meet that qualification, I think that's your question.
That is.
Is that on the backside of this building, you can get six?
Opposite industry?
No, back of this building. You can get six.
You can get six.
Yep, and then you would have to, and then along, there is a, there's a city-owned portion of that, of the road, I think it used to be First Street, I think that's what it was, that you turn into the, the fire station, is that you can get another nine in there.
Okay, so they know that they'll be removed, I mean, the, the way, the way it reads, it's supposed to be in close proximity, but I, I, I don't see where we get six, because at the end of that building is the fire hall entrance. Now eventually, yes, if they're able to purchase that.
The, the, there's, there's, the property goes out and, and covers that. We think that with, with the parking and the analysis that we did, that we can get to that 15 threshold of what we own right now. Now, we think, once another piece comes in the thing, it makes it easier there, but as it stands, as you approve this, is that correct, Corey? That we can, we, and they've seen, they've seen the, the parking diagram, is that, that we're pretty certain we can deliver those, those parking spaces.
Immediately, we can.
Yes. Yeah, without, without purchasing any additional property, is that we can do that. Not to mention that there is a agreement, and tell me if this is correct, there's an agreement with the county in the main street, which we think is transferable, is that all the parking spaces on the outside, right there on the thing, is an agreement right now with the, for the downtown.
First Street Square.
First Street Square, is that we think that that's transferable, and so that would give us up to a, a whole other slew of parking spaces. We're pretty comfortable that we meet that requirement within our current property and that, first, within our current property, yes, with great flexibility in using that agreement, we can do that. So I, we, we feel comfortable that we meet that, and they've seen that.
They know where that is, and they agree, Joe.
Yeah, we've.
And the other, other thing, you know, we talked about the asbestos, and I agree with Councilman May, that we make it, we get out of it, in other words, we let them have it and take care of it. But there was a great, there was a great gap between what they told us it was going to cost, and what someone stated in one of our meetings lately. So there was about $50,000 difference. So what are we going to pay for the asbestos for them? You said we would take care of it.
We will go and get three arms-length transaction bids to remove the, the asbestos, that we can get a certified letter that the asbestos is, is gone. And we will give them what is the lowest bid amount for that. If, if that number, this is, this is a guess, if that number is 50,000, that's, that's what we would give them for the asbestos removal, but we don't have any obligation to do it, or to have a contract, or to do any of that. But, but with, with the market right now, I think it assuredly, that it, it will likely impact the price.
Yeah, well, anywhere in the state of 25,000 and higher, 84,000 is a bid. At one time, I know, a couple of years ago, it was 84,000. So, I don't know what would be allowed. Joe, Joe, we had a lot of numbers at, at one point that, that were thrown at us, but I don't know that we ever had a, a, I guess certified number, that somebody actually went through and tested what had to be removed. I don't think so. I don't recall. I don't either. I, 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 there was a lot of estimated numbers thrown at us, but actually. I remember that number. Yeah. You remember that? Yeah. Yeah, I'm saying 4,000, so they, they, well, we, we, we didn't want them to go through, because we felt like it was too much.
Yeah.
Pay. Yeah, but, I mean, we, in, in the agreement and all that, we handle the bidding, and we get three companies, and we do low bidding.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree, I agree.
Yeah. All right, so we have a proper motion by Estes, seconded by Councilman May, we've had some spirited discussion, are there any other comments or questions? Is the proper motion properly seconded? Hearing nothing further, Councilman May?
That's all, I'm going to say.
Yeah, it is.
Did you make a motion for the, she did? And I'd say. We're good, you got.
Mr. Mayor, we're good.
Mr. Clerk, please call her on.
Councilman Estes? Councilman May? Councilman Hughes?
Aye.
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
That carries 7-0.
Thank you, Clerk. Takes us to item number eight, which is unfinished business, of which we have none, which takes us to item number nine on the agenda, which is reports from council members. To, yes.
Unfinished business.
Yes, sir.
Do we want to revisit the Chris Townsend, the Loski Avenue council? I mean, the last meeting, we, we.
I thought he asked to have.
My suggestion is you put it on the next meeting, because it wasn't advertised on today's agenda.
Okay.
And that would, that would eliminate any question about, you know, advocates of the members.
Okay, so Councilman Cassidy, we have a recommendation by our attorney for June 14.
Yes.
As new business under June 14. I got a nod from Kristi, thank you, Kristi. All right, any other comments or questions, Councilman?
All right.
Great.
Thank you.
Reports from council members, Councilman May, you're recognized.
Yeah. Joe, thank you, staff, food utilities, school system, I know everybody puts in lots, lots of time on their budget, and, you all do a great job, you know, you keep us within budget, you keep us at a very low tax rate. And also, I'd like to, to go along with what Beal said about the project at, at Fivepoint, Joe, and I know you put a lot of effort and staffed in, this is exactly what we've got to do to make downtown work, and I appreciate it, that's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Hughes?
Yes, sir, I do have a couple of things. First of all, Chief Gibson, you had your assistant in an academy for about 12 weeks, is that correct?
Two.
10 weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I would like for our next meeting to have him to come and share with us what he gained from that Northwestern University Academy. I think there's a lot of different chiefs that were in that meeting, and, and he probably could, could share some golden nuggets with us that he learned, and if, if, if he could come to our next meeting, I think that'd be good.
He's supposed to graduate Friday, he likes to graduate.
It's coming Friday, okay, great. Also, we have Bethany McCoy here for, I don't know, maybe eight years, and I think we ought to bring her back next meeting, give her a certificate of appreciation from this council, tell her we appreciate her, she was at every meeting. I notice since she has resigned, she's still there, I think maybe today's her last day, but anyhow, I'd like for us to, to honor her for her service, her being here and keeping us up on everything going on at the university was, was a real help, and I'd like for that to happen in our next meeting. I'm going to mention this again, Mr. Fivus, Ellie Fivus, and Lauren Thacker need to be honored in our next meeting, they're state winners, and I've mentioned this two months ago, it hadn't happened, I'm going to mention again, we honor state winners in this group. Councilman Cassidy just said the middle school needs to come, we need to honor them, we need to honor the girls that won the debate for the state of Tennessee. So, you want me to write that? I'd be glad to, to write.
I think we can get care of it, they finished 20th, or under 20th in the country.
They, they finished in the country, they've already been to Evansville, Indiana.
Yeah, they finished in the top. They finished in the top 20 in the country.
Top 20 in the country, that's terrific, number one in Tennessee.
That's right.
Yes, we need to honor that. I believe, Mr. Mayor, that I, I'm going to conclude, I've got a couple more.
I ran out of room, I ran out of room over here.
He was asking for another pen.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Hughes, I believe I have all of that. Councilman Webb, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, three brief items. Joe, I continue to get calls about the gate off the Smith Drive, could we maybe get an update on that?
I actually got an email on that while we were sitting here, he's contacted, there was actually a switch. There's been a, it was a little delay on that, there was a transition of Cetera, and a new person who'd been in contact, been contacted by us, and they're, they're trying to make sure they have the right specs for the, what they need, the right equipment, et cetera.
So it's moving.
They're moving.
Thank you. Another item, the old Golden Corral, out on Stewart Road.
Yes, sir, sir.
I was by there the other day, and the weeds are getting extremely high around the bend. Could we maybe get somebody to take a look at that, and contact the real estate company that has it listed, maybe get them to clean it up a little? That'd be very helpful. And the other thing, there's a, there's a new federal program that if you meet certain income guidelines, that will help subsidize your monthly broadband cost, and I want to encourage people to look into that if they think that they might be eligible for it. There's a website, fcc.gov, that has a link to the program, and just wanted to encourage anybody that thought they might use that in their household to, to check that out. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Webb, Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a request here for streetlight, a couple of streetlight requests, one is at 3423 Brighton Boulevard, Mr. Beal Campbell, and the other one is at 2372 Coventry Court, and this is from Jerry Sanders. Maybe that's for the cities to look at that, or utilities to look at that, and see if they, the streetlights are, I haven't had a chance to look at them, but talk, I talk to both of the people, but it may need, it may not, I don't know. You can, I'll get you their phone number and all of that. Okay. That's all, yeah, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman McKenzie? Thank you, madam. Thank you, also, by the way, Councilwoman, for bringing up the coastal, seems to have gotten a lot of attention, so I want to thank you on behalf of all the citizens that are concerned about that. Councilman Estes?
Um, three, four things. Chief Gibson, if you could, just pursue this avenue of 195 Sheever being a nuisance, it may not qualify, that you can reach out to the residents and the owner of the apartment complex, I know there's just a lot going on there. Just, I'm asking you to do that, I know that's a very legal issue, it has a lot of nuances, but I trust you in that, just as another avenue to kind of calm that situation down. Appreciate that. Marshall, can I ask you a question? It's not necessarily about your budget, but it might be about your budget in the future. I saw in the paper where CU signed a long-term deal with TBA for electricity, but other large fringe municipalities were thinking of going elsewhere. Did that really ever transpire, did everyone stay with, because I know the deal that I read in the paper, Upgrade, you know, it passed through, really, and major, it affected your budget for this year, right? Do you know what that, how the rest of the TBA contracts worked out, or didn't work out? Because I never heard boo about that.
As far as a specific number, I can give it for you, but I think today there are eight, I believe, that have not signed yet, but as of today, there have been no LPCs give notice to leave TBA yet.
Okay.
So at a minimum, you're five years out if they were then on that contract, so, but that's about what.
How long did you, did CU sign with, with TBA this last one?
The agreement that TBA offered was a 20-year evergreen, and so it will renew annually at a 20-year pace.
That's great, and that, that's just great, because I have friends that live in other places in the country, and they just cannot believe that are great places. So thanks, I, I didn't know of other stuff.
Think Texas.
Texas, yeah, I think Texas right now, don't think Texas.
There are others that have given notice and left.
And they want to come back, I said, I read that like in commercial appeal or somewhere. Yeah, so thank you. Could, Corey, this might be for you, I don't know, I, you know, I read the paper last night, or was it Sunday, I don't recall, or, or Friday, where Sandra and I was talking about annexations and then road access, and I, I read it twice, and I don't have the full picture. I don't need it now, you know, but if you could just send me an email, because I'm also on the planning commission, and that stuff really does matter, I know we talked about Mouse Creek today, maybe Mr. Fivus wants to address something right now, go ahead, please.
Yeah, it, it's actually, it's actually an issue that, the process is, what they were talking about is when you have non-contiguous annexations, and this one happens to be a few hundred feet from, from the city, and the road connections in there, it was, it was long, is how do you deal with those road connections? The way, from the, what the next step in the process is, is that we give them an agreement.
Interlocal.
An interlocal agreement on how to deal with that, and, and we've, we've dealt with this issue in the past, we'll, we'll share it with you as the planning commission, share with anybody, saying this is how we intend to deal with that, and then the county hopefully will reciprocate. And so that's, that's the legal process to do that.
Where I got confused was who owns what's under the road? You know, and then who's responsible going for it, I mean, I just.
That is, that is a, that is a two-hour brain conversation.
Send me an email, Corey, just send me an email or something to read, just give me a link, send me a link, and I'll read something else.
You do not want John Kimball to start down.
That's absolutely right.
I, yeah, I, I am serious, if you could send me something to read, I'd be, I'd appreciate it. And then the last thing, Joe, I'm going to send you. Uh, and then the last thing, Joe, I'm gonna send you, uh, gentleman's name and contact number for the chief there. Yeah, for the co-spirator, for the chief there. Yeah, I got all that, so, thank you.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Estes. Councilman Cassidy?
Uh, yes, Mayor, a couple of things. Um, Joe, I got a question, I don't, it can't be answered now, but the floodplain behind Rolling Hills, um, I've got some calls from neighbors back there, did we approve that? Because their flood insurance, they're paying over nine hundred dollars plus for flood insurance. So, Candy's Lane, did, did, did that affect that? Did that bring it down, or did it help in any at all? Can we find out something? Because most of those people behind Rolling Hills are retired and set incomes, and they're wondering if, uh, what we did to Candy's Lane, if that changed the floodplain in that area at all. So, can you look into that and let me know?
Well, look, the issue is, I, I doubt, I doubt the best case. Um, from my understanding is that, that the road elevation, and I haven't, you know, I'm not a surveyor and have shot it, but the, the goal was that, uh, it's not even hardly possible for it to reach those houses, not that a spectacular event could happen, is because before it goes back to the houses, it will go over the road.
Okay. Can I get a floodlight chart of that, with the core engineers to show that?
Yeah, the, well, I, I want, uh-
I think the other piece is, the floodplain doesn't change because of that, that, um, there are new floodplain maps going through the process. And if anything, that that new map could have impacted them, um, or their insurance company, or their, or their insurance company just increased the price.
Well, the, the work that the core engineers are doing, will that change the, the flood maps?
Uh, I don't know.
That's what I'm getting to.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting to.
Sure, we bet it, though. Yeah. That's why we did it.
And I like that somebody has updated that, so I can see the impact.
Yeah, I, I, on all, on all of that flood-
Low areas, they should have.
On, on all of that flood stuff, we'll, we'll have our people that actually know what they're talking about address your question.
Okay.
Um, but I think, um, I don't think that we've done anything, but I'll have them address that.
All right. And another thing, too, we, we were talking about Mouse Creek also. Can we get a new traffic count on Mouse Creek? We have a current traffic count we've done, because of all the, the soccer fields and how it's grown, to see exactly what the traffic's going down through there, is that possible? If we don't have a current one, to get something done, to see?
Sure.
I'm just curious.
Just remember, the last, the last study was fifty million dollars to fix that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that's, that's what it was.
Twenty-twelve, forty-eight.
Yeah, it was four, it was forty-eight, it was forty-eight million. So, but we're happy to do the traffic stuff.
Is that in the budget? Is that in the budget? Is that one of the lines I didn't see?
We're happy, we're happy, we're happy to pull some numbers.
Okay. Um, sure. Pickleball lights, can you update on pickleball lights where we're?
Uh, they should, they, they may even be in now, I haven't had a chance to look at the emails, they're supposed to come in at the end of May, and then, uh, they'll, they'll start the process of getting them up.
Okay. Candy's Lane, I've had a lot of questions on paving, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. When they finish Candy's Lane, how much new paving is going to be done? Is it going to be from Freewill Road all the way up to the Bowlin Alley? Or just where the sidewalk starts down Candy's, up that way? How, because I know Cleveland Utilities is actually cutting some of the road up there also, so I'm just, I'm, I've been asked questions about it, so.
We're just, we're just gonna leave it like that until you get phone calls. No, no, just kidding. It's been a long day.
Yeah, your presentation was pretty long, Joe.
I know, I know, I know. I had a couple of people say, boy, we really missed those long presentations. No, um, uh, at the end of, of the Candy's project, what will, what will happen is that it will be, uh, repaved from up at Legacy-
Okay.
-all the way down through the project, um, down past Rolling Hills, all the way to, um, Freewill.
Freewill, okay.
Um, had conversations with, uh, our friends at CU on some of those street cuts about working together to, uh, pay some, or to work on the pavement of those thirteen street cuts that they did there recently. But, uh, but-
Thank you very much, I got calls for road being closed again.
So, so, that, that entire road will be repaved.
Okay, thank you.
We're also looking at, uh, repaving Inverness and, um, uh-
Because of all the traffic going through there?
Traffic through there, that may be done at the same time as well. Interlaken and Inverness may be paved at the same time, because what we're, when they go out there and mobilize and, and do that.
Are we still on schedule on our paving?
So, and, 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 and that's why I said is, we're hoping to be able to do lac, interlaken and Inverness, and it's a possibility at some point.
Above of what we're doing in the paving schedule right now, correct?
But, yeah, that, yeah, so certainly Candy's will be done.
Okay.
But while you're out there mobilized, that road took a beating when we had it closed, so we think that if there's some, uh, uh, there's some problem areas that need to be addressed.
Okay.
What was your statement?
No, that, that's it, that's it. The last question, it actually goes to Cleveland Utilities on that part, since I've got them sitting over here. Um, I got a few calls, and I did talk to him, and y'all did call me back on this, so, but I did, I, I said I would put a request in. Uh, the left turn light coming out of McDonald's on Paul Huff, going across, going towards Hopewell, there's a left turn lane there, but there's not a left turn light. And there's been some, I've had a few calls, and usually I, I talk to him with one call, I don't really do anything, but when I have a few calls, it's a concern, uh, that people don't know, they're coming across, they've changed lanes, and they're coming across, and people don't know when they want to turn. So the other day, when I was there going to pickleball, that's what I was doing, is, is going straight across, and as I, as I noticed, there was a green light going back the other way, but no turn lane, and somebody was sitting there waiting to turn left. So there, there's kind of a confusion, they got, first, there's turned left going to Hopewell, doesn't know when is a good time to turn, and there's been some close calls, I've had people call me and said, there's been some close calls there. Uh, could, could they possibly put a, a left turn signal in at this spot?
I know that Tim is aware of that, he talked about that briefly last week, and that's the conversation we will still end up having with the city, uh, during the traffic light meetings that we have.
Okay. There are a lot of people that use McDonald's there to live out towards Hopewell, that turns in, but when they come out, they want to go by the light and go out. There's no other way to exit, so when you go out, you're sitting there in left-hand lane, you got the green light, go straight across, but you don't have a left turn light. You do have a left turn light coming out, going towards Georgetown back up, toward, towards, uh, the interstate, you do have one there, so. I was just asking, you already got the thing up there, it's, it's, it's there, so I'll just ask some questions, I, if I could make a request, I don't know if I can or not, Mayor. Uh, but I, I request that for safety purposes, for people to use it.
We'd definitely look into that.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Maybe that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilman. Uh, I also had just a few comments during this report, from council members, um, Public Works, I just wanted to say thank you to, um, I don't see Tommy back there, but we got a, a very nice call, uh, today, actually, a lawyer in town had some difficulties, and we're complimenting Lindsey Hawkins at the Public Works Department. Uh, also got some very positive comments on the social media updates from the city, uh, especially with the Seventeenth Street closures and the upcoming Twentieth Street closures. People are thanking the city of Cleveland for letting them know in advance, and with the very, very good, uh, updated maps that are being sent out. Uh, also wanted to say thank you so much to Joe Fibas and the City Council for the budget that was presented today, and all the encompasses for the future of our city, uh, which included the HHN, there was a couple of comments about the new building rendering that's downtown, and I concur with all those comments about, um, how great that is, that that partnership was, um, was done so, so smoothly, with such excellence. And then the only other item, uh, today that I wanted to report was the mayoral appointment for the open seat on the City Planning Commission at the loss of our friend, uh, Planning Commissioner Larry Presswood. Uh, we had Dr. Tiffany Sherlin who applied during the City Council openings with, uh, great responses, uh, city resident on Sunset Avenue, and has expressed, uh, interest in serving as a planning commissioner. And as a mayoral appointment, I would like to appoint Tiffany Sherlin, her application and information, uh, is on file, and, uh, and that is available for anyone who needs to see that on the council's website. Uh, so that concludes our updates from the City Council members. It does take us to item number ten on the agenda, which is new business ordinances. Uh, there is a new business ordinance A, which is two zero two one dash seventeen, which is adopting officially the FY twenty twenty-two budget, it's in your packets on pages fifty-two through fifty-eight, and that will, as new business, require a motion.
Still move. Second.
That is a proper motion by Councilman Estes, properly seconded by Councilman Cassidy. Are there any conversations or comments? Councilman Webb?
Uh, Mayor, in an abundance of caution, uh, I do need to disclose that I'm a board member of Light Bridges, there isn't a portion for them in the budget, and also that I'm Cleveland Utilities retiring.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, any other comments or questions or admissions at this time? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please take your role. Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Hughes?
Aye.
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, that motion passes. Takes us to the second new ordinance under item ten, it's ordinance two zero two one dash eighteen, which is amending the FY two zero two one budget, it's also in your packets on pages fifty-nine through sixty-six, and that also requires a motion.
So move. Right, actually.
Well, all right, so, I'm gonna say that motion is enthusiastically given by council members May, and seconded by Councilmember Webb. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none? Mr. Clerk, please call her on. Councilman May?
Aye.
Councilman Webb?
Aye.
Councilman Hughes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Aye.
Councilman Estes?
Aye.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
That carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That motion passes, it takes us to item number eleven, which has already been talked about, for under announcements. City offices will be closed Monday, May thirty-first, and observance will roll away. Uh, and the next City Council meeting will be held on Monday, June fourteenth. There are no further items. Uh, Mr. Fibas, yes, sir, you're recognized.
Uh, what, I want to do, uh, a, a couple of announcements, and I've talked too much today, but these are probably, uh, the most important things that I've said. Uh, first of all, I want to introduce, uh, Taylor Coe, uh, she is a Lee University student, uh, for, uh, public administration, and, uh, she's gonna be helping us, uh, this summer doing, uh, doing an internship for, uh, classes, so finally we get back to some normalcy and have someone to, uh, uh, help us, help us do some work, so, uh, welcome aboard, thank you very much. And, and someone that has been with us for a while, I want to introduce someone that is, uh, our accountant, and is studying to, uh, uh, to, uh, certified municipal accountant, I think that's what it is, is that you have, uh, Rachel Clayton in the back, if you want to stand up. Uh, she's our new accountant, she's been with us for nine months. Since seven. Okay, I can't count that long. Is that, Rachel's done a fabulous job, and, uh, she's given a lot of, uh, assistance during all of this, all the budget, and all of the little things. Um, and, and I think it, it's a testament to, uh, Amy Newman, who, who is really special, and who was our, who was our only accountant, is that she was able to do that job for as long as she did by herself. So, uh, Rachel comes to us, uh, uh, from a, from an auditing firm, uh, she's, uh, spectacular, and, uh, wanted to officially welcome you aboard, and, uh, thank you for everything you do. Um, a couple, a couple of points is that we do on the budget, just like we normally do, is you have the, uh, the second approval will be at the next meeting, you'll have the corresponding pieces of the budget to, uh, approve on that, and that will be on June fourteenth. Um, if you have any questions, certainly, uh, let us know, and, uh, we'll be working